Good evening, everyone. At this time, it looks like we have a quorum so we can call this meeting to order. If everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Smith, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. At this time, do we have a board member who would be willing to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I would make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Ms. Burns has made the motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Mr. Smith is second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All in favor, so moved. At this time, we're moving on to the recognition part of our evening. This is always probably our favorite part of the evening of our meetings. So, Dr. Hill, I believe we're turning it over to you, sir.
Yes, ma'am, and we have a lot today. I have a script even. So, Mr. Riley's done a great job. If you'll refer to your screens, you can see that we have a lot of recipients tonight, and we're very excited to acknowledge these folks and get them here on the screen so they can be seen. First up, we'd like to recognize our Battle of the Books champions from the district. Both our middle and elementary competitions had to be held digitally this year to meet COVID-19 safety protocols. So, a big shout out to our school and district staff members who made sure the teams could connect and compete. Let's start with middle school winners from Topsail as Coach Amy Engel introduces her team.
Hi, Amy. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is my, what I like to call dream team right here. I'm so very proud of them. I'm very excited. They've read 22 books multiple times and ain't hungry for this year. So, I'm very proud of them. I have three eighth graders. When I call your name, you kind of wave because you might be in a different space than what I'm saying. So, eighth grader Maddie Matthews, and eighth grader Paige McGraw. Matt Wokes is also an eighth grader. And I have four seventh graders, Abigail O'Reilly, Tom Missoul, Elizabeth Rinson, and Kate Furtickett. And then I've got six sixth graders, which is Enesmi and Keston Brunel. They're right there between. I have to give a lot of those. Adrian Graham. Evelyn Martiano, Martiano, I don't know, right? Did I say that right? And Lyndon is not able to make it with us, but she was also with us. I have two assistant coaches, Miss Bosch and Miss Heman. Again, super excited, so proud of this team. And they have not just been exciting to work with through this interesting year, but also they have just come through and were an unbelievable team. They challenge themselves, and I'm just really proud of them. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, you ready?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, next up, we'd like to introduce Coach Melissa Taylor from Cape Fear Elementary as the Cubs won the elementary competition. Ms. Taylor, please introduce your team.
I'd like to introduce my team. I would like to start with my fifth graders who have participated in both years at our school. They would be Addie Tickett, Caroline Hall, Elise Batista Ordu- Arduña, Lionel Sanchez Santiago, Samantha Gaston, Krista Coral Correll, and Maggie Henkel. And then our other fifth graders with Tyler Deaton, Isabel McBride. And then we have some fourth graders who joined us this year, Audie Pogo, Brady Dakes, Piper Nichols, and Adely Walker.
Great, guys. We just want to thank you so much for everything you did. Loved the picture, loved the certificate, and thank you so much. You guys did a great job.
Nice job.
All right, thanks, guys. Congratulations.
All right. Oh, one's in a soccer game. Okay, she can't run with that? We got it?
No.
Okay. We can drive with them. All right. So, our next recognitions are for eight amazing young people who are headed to Governor's School this summer. The last time we took Governor's School, we had three, so this is a tremendous increase. These students are Abigail Croon, Pender High, for Social Science. Can you wave?
Is that Abby?
There's Abigail. There she is, yep. Jasmine Randall, Topsail High School, for Instrumental Music. Yvonne Alexander, Topsail High, for Math. She is. Caitlin Shepard, Topsail High, for Math. Nicole Corsi, Topsail High, for Natural Science.
My video isn't working, sorry.
Oh, it's okay. Isabel Klein Peter, Topsail High, for Natural Science. There she is. Sophia Manning, Topsail High, for Natural Science. And Lola Page from Topsail High, for Visual Art.
Yay.
Congratulations, guys. Represent this well.
Congrats, guys. Thanks very much. Last but not least, our arts and music folks. If you all wouldn't mind turning your cameras on, art and music folks.
Art and music folks. They will be front stage. There they are.
Oh, my gosh. Look at that. That's beautiful.
Oh, sorry.
Nice. That's awesome.
Which one are we finding? Oh, so that's right. They'll be over there.
You might want to come over here. There you go.
Oh, yes.
Can y'all see that? That's beautiful.
All right. So, next, we have some very talented artists from the district. We'll start with Lauren Corsi. You may have heard that name. Nicole Corsi was her sister going to Governor's School. Lauren's work was entered into the 2020 Scholastic Art Awards. This national event had more than 200,000 entries across a variety of mediums and platforms. And Lauren was one of only 2,000 works out of that 200,000 to receive recognition as she earned a Silver Medal for her work incarcerated. That's beautiful.
There you go.
There it is. Show that award all. Yeah, I think you're, there we go. One more time. There you go. All right, now, I'll give you a break. It's Ariel. All right. So additionally, Pender County Schools was fortunate enough to have two students in the district placed top 10 in the North Carolina Aviation Art Contest. Out of the more than 764 entries, Topsail High's Haley Coombs took third while Pender Early College's Sidney Herring was seventh. Their art will be on display at the North Carolina Museum of Art in Raleigh for this coming year. Congratulations, guys. So, finally, we go to music where Shane Hughes from Topsail High joined thousands of students from across the country who tried out for the 2021 Great American Marching Band. Shane was one of the lucky few who made the band, which means she will get to march in the 2021 Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade this year. So, congratulations. You guys are awesome. So talented.
Thank y'all so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Awesome job. Thank you.
And just as a note to the board, we obviously had a lot of recognitions tonight, and we'll have more to do next month. Representatives from the state will be here in May to recognize Pender County as a Purple Star District based on our commitment to serving students from military families. Also, we'll be honoring three students from the county who will be taking part in the state science fair later this month with Ms. Taylor from Cape Fear Elementary. She'll be back next month as she is scheduled to receive an award from Corning tomorrow for her work as a STEM educator. Also, you probably saw on social media that we had a lot of students from Pender High, and Pender Lee are in invitations to the National Beta Club Competition at Disney in Orlando this summer. We'll have updates from them after they return from that event during the summer, but just wanted to mention their state success before they move on to Nationals. Lots going on, guys, getting back to some normalcy of our success. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. We'll move on in just one second. I think we're having some technical difficulty.
Shirley, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right, hang tight.
Okay.
At this time, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do.
I will. The Pender County Board of Education welcomes comments from our parents, students, and community. The open session for public comment is deemed for the Board of Education to listen and respond at a later time if necessary. Comments should be limited to three minutes. And from what I understand, we had someone to email us and ask that it be read at public comment. Is that correct?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, this is from Mr. Kevin McCauley. Mr. McCauley writes, Dear Board Members, I am writing you with immediate concerns that my wife and I have with COVID policies. This is the last minute for the meeting this evening, but I'm asking that you please address it or at least read this aloud during the public comment portion of the meeting. Our major concerns are about the restrictions being placed on the children in the name of public health. I'm trying to avoid going on a rant about this, but the masks need to come off. First and foremost, they need to come off during any physical activity and while outdoors. I can't believe that this is not being discussed openly and often at school and Board of Education meetings. Instead, all that is being discussed is the numbers. People are not numbers. Children are not numbers. The masks and social distancing in schools should have been temporary measures. The continued use of these measures is much more damaging psychologically and physically to the children than any hypothetical benefit from using them. A recent decision was made by a German court that now prohibits the use of masks, social distancing, et cetera, in schools in their area because of the damaging effects to children and the lack of evidence for potential benefits. He has provided a link for this article. The masks are especially dangerous for children to be wearing as we enter the warmer spring season. You do not want a child overheating or passing out on your watch due to them wearing a mask during physical exercise. This can easily be avoided by making the common sense decision of removing masks while exercising and outdoors. We have two daughters at Topsail Elementary. The teachers, principal, and staff have always been great to work with, and we are asking them for assistance now in alternatives for our daughters. Our immediate request is that they be given another option for PE and recess. It's sad to say, but our daughters would rather read in the library than have to exercise or be outside in the heat with masks on. I have no doubt that you and everyone else in the school system is doing what they think is best for the children and the community. People need to stop thinking like managers, though, and start connecting with each other. I have a job where I am with members of the public in their homes. The vast majority of the people I've talked to have concerns like we do, yet no one is voicing them publicly. This needs to stop. We need to stop quoting policy, stop following orders, and start doing what is best for our communities, respecting individual rights. You are exhausted with a lot of responsibility now more than ever. That's why it's so important that everyone pull back and reexamine what is being done to our children. I think you'll see that much more harm is being done than good. Thank you in advance for your help. I know you want what's best for our kids. We all do. Sincerely, Kevin McCauley.
Thank you, sir. That was the only public comment for this evening, correct? All right, thank you. Moving now into the information section of our agenda. First up, COVID-19 school operations update. Dr. Blumenwright?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We've got Shirley Steele on the phone, and Ms. Steele, if you'd like to go over Pender County members, we've got them on the overhead screen.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So, currently, and I was going to give you some state numbers just to start out with, but North Carolina has seen 936,000 cases, 12,000 deaths, and currently, there's 1,032 people hospitalized. Pender County, we're seeing, our test numbers are at 5,124. Ninety-nine percent have recovered. We've had 69 deaths, and we currently have one hospitalized. And I'm not sure exactly what numbers you have up there, but you can see that the age range of the most positive cases happened in the 25 to 49-year-olds. Our state, our positivity rate for the county is just under the state. The state's at 8.3. We're at 8.2. And we are higher than the surrounding counties, and I literally, I mean, really, we cannot figure out where that's coming from because we're probably averaging about, I'd say, less than 10 positive cases a day this week. Last week, it was probably about 20, but really not sure where that positive, why our positive rate is still so high. We do feel like we maybe in our county are doing more testing, whereas some surrounding counties are just saying, hey, somebody in your family's positive, then they don't test the rest of the household, and a lot of our providers are continuing to test. As far as vaccinations are concerned, Pender County overall, 24.9% is partially vaccinated and 18.4% is fully vaccinated. And compared to the state, the state has partial vaccination at 26.6 and fully vaccinated at 20%. Pender County Health Department has given 15,107 doses of Moderna vaccine to date. I'm sure most of you have heard that they put a stop, hold on the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine today because of the cerebral venous sinus thrombosis with thrombosuppnea, meaning that it's a blood clot, and they've found the blood clot in combination with low levels of blood platelets. And they've had six people who have shown that to have those side effects from the Johnson &amp; Johnson. We are currently vaccinating this week, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. We've been doing some of our manufacturing plants. We are trying to get, after next week, we hope to be back just Tuesday and Thursday vaccination days. We are not, we have been very slow to get rid of vaccine appointments. They're readily available, and I, we think it's because vaccine is so available almost anywhere, but we are really having a hard time getting rid of vaccine appointments at this point. And that's all I have. If anybody has any questions.
Board members, any questions? No.
Madam Chair, I just would like to make a comment that the Health Department is doing a tremendous job of vaccinations. I mean, the process they ran through and what they've done for us has just been something we just want to thank them for so much publicly, and they're doing a tremendous service to this community.
Did you hear that, Ms. Steele?
I think I did. You've done a good job of doing this.
Sure, thank you.
Did you catch the good job part? As long as you caught the good job part, did you catch that?
Yeah, I caught that.
Okay, good. Thank you for all you're doing. We appreciate you.
Yeah, I will say that we really enjoy doing the school staff. It was the most liveliest crowd we've had. So, it's made for a good day.
All right, good. Thank you so much.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Moving forward, these numbers were pulled at approximately noon today, so currently, six isolated across the district, so those were people that are positive. Twenty-one are quarantined, which means that they have been directly exposed to people who are positive. And what I did was kind of take the dashboard and break it up, and of course, you can see Craig's Handiwork down there with regards to the line of best fit regarding reported for symptoms, diagnosis, et cetera. And the trend line, of course, is going down, so that is a very good measure, and of course, we've got our total days of isolation and quarantine up top with that particular component, and so that's, it's been a year. It's been a year. Of course, Alex's Handiwork has put out yesterday morning at 9:55 a.m. And lastly, specific to the school's operational update. So, we've broken this down into a few components, and of course, there will be a number of other people that will chime in as appropriate. Specific to the operations information, and especially now with the students back with Plan A at the middle schools and high schools, enhanced cleaning. Cleaning needs to occur, and we need to make sure that our facilities are as clean as possible, so we are working with the site administrators and, of course, AFS for semi-monthly reporting process with regards to the cleaning and making sure that that works appropriately. Currently, with transportation, capacity is not an issue, but we are kind of keeping an eye on all processes to be addressed as needed if there's students that are not being picked up as they're coming back and things of that nature. And then, specific to classroom information, there are three bills that were just signed by Governor Cooper on Friday.
Thank you, Dr. Blumenwright. Members of the board, I was able to send you some information earlier today. These were all signed Friday afternoon by our governor, so some of them we had been trying to get ahead but weren't really sure where to go until we knew for sure if it was going to be a law or not, and if there were going to be any final changes. The first one, House Bill 82, is probably the one that's on most of our minds. It's the one that we've been most concerned about. That is in regards to summer learning choice. A couple highlights that I would just kind of want to share. So, one of the first important things I want to mention, a final edit was to address the question about year-round schools. So, what they added was to allow year-round schools to either work over the summer or up to October 1st, which in our case for Pender Lee would be the Friday of their second week from the first trackout. So, they are allowed to break it up between to some whatever degree of the summer and use some element of the trackout. We have met with Ms. Fuller. We're asking right now that the leadership team there begin kind of thinking through how they might like to address that along with the support from our elementary and secondary directors. So, that was something that we did not know what was going to be until basically right before it got signed, so that's one of the first big changes. Overall, here's the deal. So, it's 150 hours or 30 days, so kind of think like the calendar bill that we've often worked with where they give us hours or days. We can count instruction, but we're not allowed to count recess or lunch or transition times or anything of that nature. It is supposed to be kind of instruction only, very similar rules to our calendar. We must provide meals and transportation. It is targeted toward at-risk. The bill does not give a definition of at-risk other than it refers to other state laws, which essentially sort of talk about students that are in jeopardy of being promoted to the next grade level or have other factors that a school system can choose to do. We are already working with our schools, trying to utilize some of the things we already do, like our MTSS systems where we already kind of look at factors, everything from EOG scores, grades, attendance, whether they've already been identified as struggling in either academic areas or social-emotional areas. So, we're going to be kind of working with our staff to kind of look at not only, you know, identifying who's at risk, but also trying to think about the number of factors that a student may be working through. We're also required to have a social-emotional learning component. In grades kindergarten through second, it is targeted at reading and math in addition to the social-emotional learning. And one enrichment activity that is, they list examples as being art, music, PE. Each school system would have the choice of what we'd like to offer. For grades third through eight, it is also reading and math and also science, and in addition, the enrichment or elective period as well. For ninth through 12th grade, it's really kind of a three-part process, so the first part is offering interventions and remediation for students that are not So the first part is offering interventions and remediation for students that are not proficient in the EOC area. So biology, English 2, and then math 1 or math 3, students take one of the other. So that's the first level. We're supposed to support and help those students become proficient. The next level is working for credit recovery. That is actually, has been and continues to be one of Pender County's strengths. Between Ms. Winstead, Dr. Lee, and our high school principals, we have a very robust credit recovery program. They do an excellent job of recruiting, getting kids in, working with teachers, and using a number of different platforms. So that one luckily is already in our wheelhouse. We do that on a regular basis anyway. And then the third is we all have, we have to offer an in-person elective. We are honestly still waiting to understand whether that is for new credit or to recover a credit. The first two elements very much speak to having to recover credit. The elective, it is not clear. So we have asked for some understanding of what that would be. Let's see, it is voluntary. We cannot require a student to come. We will be working hard to reach out and to try to encourage our students to come. Some other things that I would want to sort of bring up. We are ready to start trying to recruit our staffs. The bill, one of the last additions, was to require districts to offer signing bonus of $1,200 to select teachers at the elementary and middle school if they had received previous bonuses for reading and math. And we could include teachers that had National Board certification at any point in time. It didn't say how long or if they still had it, just said if you had ever received it. One thing that we will like to propose is that, in fact, that we offer that to all of our teachers. It also mentions a performance bonus, but this case it specifically talks about third grade reading. So one of the other things that they stress is combining what used to be the Read to Achieve summer reading camps. So they're not going to have a separate version of that anymore. It says they would combine that with this, and we're directed to sort of put the two together. This is kind of a holdover from that. So anyone who teaches third grade could receive a performance bonus if the student was a Level 1 or 2 on their reading EOG at the end of the year. And then we can give the EOG again at the end of the summer camp, and if they become a 3, 4, or 5 for every, for every student, that teacher could get $150. We do not, it's, I won't say it's an unfunded mandate, but it's pretty close. So we will be allowed to use what we might get for Read to Achieve, which we're still waiting for. And then everything after that is up to us. So they are encouraging us to use ESRS money. We can use at-risk money. We can use whatever money we still have left. But anything beyond the Read to Achieve will have to come from us working together on that one. We do have some reports we have to send at the end. How many students still, how many students end up being promoted? How many students are retained? How many students become proficient? So we'll be working with the schools on that. So that's, that's kind of the big general structure. Any, any questions about that? Any thoughts?
Board members, any questions or concerns, comments?
So our next big piece is the recruitment part that I wanted to kind of...
Board, if you have it, there was an email that went out today, just recently, that we thought we'd, been out to try to get you, get that in front of you. So what we're getting ready to talk about is kind of the paid perspective.
It's kind of the paid perspective. I just want to make sure you knew that you could pull that up in your email and have that right in front of you if you wanted to.
I do have hard copies, members.
Would you prefer, yeah?
It helps.
Yes, please. It's easier for me to have a hard copy.
So as I mentioned, the minimum that we're required is the $1,200 for the specifically identified teachers. We would like to try to do more for our teachers than that. Where we are at this point in our planning is we're looking at starting Monday, June 7th. The reason so early is we have not a lot of time to get it done, so we would like to start as soon as we possibly could. We are looking at trying to finish around July 9th. That's 23 days. If we run a regular model school day, that would get us to our 150 hours. Of course, if there's any weather issues or anything like that, obviously we may, that may carry it over, but that would be our goal. That would still give time for the normal maintenance operations that we need to get done, our orientation programs that we like to do in addition to our work with Parks and Rec, Camp Innovation, and a number of other things. What we would like to do, and we've proposed to the board, for our 10-month staff, so that's sort of your core classroom teachers, any of the teachers that sign up to work for the entire summer will get the $1,200 bonus. And then in addition, we've done some research with our other districts and trying to find a line that we think is supportive of the full range, whether you're a first-year teacher or a 30-year teacher, and provide a $30-an-hour stipend or your hourly rate plus 10%, whichever number is higher. The high end of our teaching staff is generally around the $30-an-hour, so we're trying to provide an incentive, but also provide incentive for our most experienced teachers. For our teacher assistants, we would like to provide an $800 signing bonus. That's obviously above and beyond what the bill requires, along with a $20-an-hour rate or their hourly rate plus 10%. Again, a little bit more. For our bus drivers, we would like to provide a $400 signing bonus. If the person is, whether a teacher or an assistant, actually does both, we do have some teachers that drive, obviously it's the vast majority are assistants, they would be eligible for, for both roles. Obviously, we would still continue the kind of the clock-out stuff. You know, once you're driving, you're on one rate, when you're on IA, you're on another rate. But provide a $400 signing bonus and then $18 an hour or that rate plus 10%. Mr. Smith was very helpful in analyzing the, the bus driver pay scale, and the 18 is slightly on the high end, not the very highs, but it's on the higher end. We are, we're going to need substitutes, we know that. Obviously, whichever role they substitute in, we would pay at the hourly rate. Because this will have to carry over, we can't get it done in June, and if we wait to start till July, we won't get it done by the time we need to get school back and running. So we've been looking at our 11-month and support staff, so they already work through the end of, of June. We would try to provide them a $100 signing bonus and to stay the additional week, the week and a half, along with their hourly rate plus 10%. And then obviously, we have to work with our site administrators. Our principals, while they're 12-month, are busy getting ready for the next school year. So with Read to Achieve, we've often worked with our assistant principals or teachers that maybe have their masters in school administration and are thinking about it. It's a good training opportunity with hopefully lots of support. So we would like to provide them the $1,500 signing bonus, and then again, in addition to the hourly rate plus 10%. We are, the bill encourages us to try to be flexible with contracts, and so we anticipate that some people may really want to work but can't commit to the entire summer. So we're looking at trying to figure out a way to prorate for people if they commit to half of it or more, but maybe can't do quite the full five to six weeks, trying to prorate the, the signing bonuses, and then obviously still work with their hourly rate or 10%. That's, I think, we've kind of done some research with other places. I think that puts us on the slightly higher end, at least what they're telling us out loud. But we've, we'd like to begin sharing this information and trying to do intense surveys ASAP. We didn't want to send it out before it was a bill, and unfortunately, they waited until Friday. We have to turn a plan into the state 30 days before our last day of instruction. So for Pender County, we end up on May 28th, so back up 30 days. That puts us right around April 28th, which happens to be two weeks from today. We still don't know what format that is supposed to be, other than we're supposed to turn something in. We're hoping to hear pretty quick whether that's a template, a letter, or what. We don't, we don't know yet. And the ESRS funds that we may need to rely on just were released, one round was released this week and one was released April 1st. So a lot of these pieces are just coming together, literally within the last couple of days to a week. But we would like to get the surveys out before the end of the week to begin determining how many teachers are interested, which obviously then impact the number of students that we can provide at the same time. We are working with some third-party groups. Parks and Rec have been wonderful partners. They have been at the table since this first came up. They're working to try to figure out how they could help us. We've actually talked with Camp Kirkwood. I had a meeting with them last week. They have offered up trying to be parties, especially with this enrichment elective situation. And Community and Schools is also someone we're trying to work with to put all these different pieces together. What questions can we kind of help answer on the summer learning?
So what if we ramp up and you hire all these people, make offers, and we don't have the students to support it? What happens then?
We are actually able to continue offering down the list even beyond at-risk. Obviously, that's our first goal. But actually, the bill does allow us that if our at-risk students, we can't get them to come, we're actually able to offer it to other Pender County students who wouldn't be on the list for at-risk, but still would take advantage of it. So we can go beyond the list.
Board, I know this is awful information, but as Dr. Aiken explained, we're on our two-week window. So the sooner we start, the better chance we've got of having an applicable plan to submit. So if you would entertain the idea, I know it's quick, but if, any way we could possibly move this towards some sort of action item since it does involve compensation. If you're not comfortable tonight, is there any way you could speak with legal and possibly leave it open to have a phone call, you know, tomorrow or I guess as soon as possible? If you want time to look at it more?
Has legal had opportunity to review what was presented to us already?
I, I have, and it is consistent with the session law's requirements. And it's what both the federal and state government are expecting school districts to be doing with ESRS funds. I, though I think I'll say is the idea of having learning recovery, which is one of the phrases being used to sort of couch what is meant to be done during these summer programs, you're living into the intent of the legislation. My opinion is that if the board likes what they see, then you could add it as an action item tonight for approval. If you don't, you have the option of providing comments, recessing tonight's meeting to resume at a stated time to address it again. But personally, I have no concerns with the compensation model as prepared. I say that it's got to be flexible because things are going to change as you build a ship, especially as quickly as this one's being built. But the concept and the numbers make sense, especially when you're asking someone to take five weeks out of a, in a relatively short period of time.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion then that we amend the agenda, add COVID-19 summer learning proposal to Action 22.
Mr. Attorney, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir, Mr. George.
Does this consider a budgetary item?
I do not believe so because it's, it is simply telling you what they're going to propose, people. It would come back individually as part of a personnel or a budget item in personnel ones. The money's sort of actually, you know, available to specific individuals. This is more, here's our plan, this is what we have to report to Raleigh. That's how I would view it. Ms. Chestnut may have a different viewpoint.
I mean, just so we have the policy, we can't add a budgetary item to...
Absolutely. And, and, and that's why I would, I would not consider this a budgetary item, just because it is a, it's a planning tool to be able to advertise for positions.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. And it needs to be moved to number 21, 20...
22.
22. Okay. Mr. Smith has made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. George is second, and on approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay? Anything else under COVID-19 school operations update?
Madam Chair, I'll just bring, real quick, we will bring more information to the board. Senate Bill 387 is another very large one that has some longer, longer-term impacts, but they don't hit us just yet. That is the Excellent Public Schools Act of 2021. That is essentially a revamp and upgrade to the Read to Achieve legislation that we've been working under now for five, six, seven years. I have not had a chance to fully dive into it. It's 12 pages long, and I just haven't had a chance. It essentially kind of continues forward most of those structures. It does lay out some specific curriculum expectations for us to follow, and they will be, they have directed DPI to rewrite the reading standards. So that will be something that will be impacting kind of what we do, especially at the elementary level. I will bring more specific information as soon as I can. And then House Bill 53, I actually probably will let Dr. Blumenwright explain as that deals with our military students.
Just one quick question, Dr. Aiken.
Yes, ma'am.
Did they have any conversation about our pre-K kids?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, I thank you for pointing that out. That's actually one of the biggest changes. So prior to this point, pre-K really has not been a part of the K-12 curriculum. This bill actually requires pre-K now to be a part of the Read to Achieve process. So thank you for asking that. That actually, in some ways, conceptually is a great thing because it does wrap that into what we do overall. Ms. Bull has already attended a couple of webinars, and our coaches, along with Ms. Owens, our elementary director, are beginning to attend some webinars related to some of what these new changes are going to be for Read to Achieve.
All right, good. Thank you.
No, thank you, ma'am. That was a good question.
Thank you.
Well, it goes back to, Madam Chair, what we tend to start referring ourselves to now is pre-K to 13.
Mm-hmm.
I think people need to understand that we're a few more years than traditionally.
I agree. All right.
House Bill 53, basically adds some provisions to students that are currently Pender County students, specific to military deployment. And so if some are being in the process of deployed, we may be able to continue to allow them to be Pender County students until such time as the school year ends. So we're looking through those processes with my group, make sure that that occurs. The last little piece, of course, is the ESRS 2 and ESRS 3 information. Board Council had forwarded all of you an email with attachments specific to that, but these are the, the three main components when taking a look at all of that, that they can be used for. And so funds to address learning loss and social-emotional learning impacts, facilities, of course, and making them clean and safe, and of course, the technology for remote and hybrid instruction, which will still, of course, be an option this next year.
All right. Thank you.
Questions?
Anything else concerning what's been presented, or questions or concerns about COVID-19 school operations update?
So I got a question. So back when we voted to go to Plan A, the discussion was that about the cafeterias were going to be open. And we've since learned that the elementary school has chosen not to. Can you explain to the public why, and us really why, that, that, that was, that change was made?
Yes, sir, Mr. George. We, we sit down with curriculum instruction. We actually opened up that as an option for them within their schools. We did not give a directive that they had to maximize the use of cafeteria or use it as 100%. We said the word was open to use within their schools. The elementary schools had processes in place. They've been on A for a long time. The principals met a small group, decided that they had programs and things that were going on that were important and they wanted to still include, and they mixed it within their system, but they did not put 100% of the kids inside that program. So we don't have that. We've also looked into the other schools, and I would say, just off for a second, I would say that when we do this, the normal process is we have site-based management here, which the principals work with their leadership teams at each school. So when we vote to do something, which is to open up a program or open up a school, we normally say you have the options now that it's open. Include that into your interior plan for your school. They work within the leadership team of their school to develop how that actually works day-to-day. And in this case, that didn't, I think that draws some attention from the board that we wanted to discuss it today, and it wasn't exactly what the board anticipated. If the board has, wants us to maximize use of those elementary schools, if you tell us that today, we would put that directive out there and say that that's, this must now be what happens within your schools, has to be built around the process of the cafeterias being used to the maximum ability possible. We can do that. We also looked at middle schools and high schools. High school's a little easier to achieve, larger cafeterias, they also have about, all of them have at least 30-plus percent of their kids that are still not attending face-to-face. We've looked at middle schools as well. They're a little bit different. We've actually had some that use it fully, who have now looked at the process of maybe letting the kids eat in classrooms. because honestly, they're missing some of that teacher interaction time. That's kind of been requested to go back to classroom at least one day a week. Actually, that is a strategy used historically to build more interaction time if you want to eat in class, sometimes to do certain projects and things like that. So there, like Topsail Elementary School has a larger cafeteria, a lot easier. It used to be a high school. We found things where at Cape Fear, they actually work with their leadership team, and they have a grade that goes, but they have two grades where the students ask not to go. The students requested still eating in the cafeteria. So if we leave it as site-based management with their leadership teams, you're going to have a flexibility within the culture of each school because there's different populations in each school. But if the board wants us to say they're not open, they will be used 100%, that language can be put out there, and we will build programs around that, absolutely.
I don't think it's so much as the board dictating that it be open. The understanding was when we voted on Plan A, that was one of the topics that was brought up. And to be blindsided by it later was just, I wasn't expecting that, that yes, there's some that want to stay in the classroom, but there's several that want to go to the cafeteria. And that was part of the reason going back to school was the social aspect of it. I heard one of the reasons we weren't doing it is because of the physical distancing requirements. Well, that's no longer there, and we're busing them all on buses together.
Right. So the recommendation is now three feet after that meeting that came down to three feet. Most of them are trying to meet recommendations where they can. It's just like, schools are open, but they're really not like they were in 1819. We're not following those same schedules. So principals are rule followers initially, and they are looking at the recommendations and trying to put as many in as they can. It doesn't make any sense. I mean, I agree with you. We're all over the place with what the recommendations are. They're slowly creeping back in, and that's what we're trying to do. I mean, we're trying to, where we can, put them back in, but also follow as many of the guidelines as we can. So I mean, that's really where they looked at it at. So they're trying to follow as many as they can. To bus, you can't. I mean, absolutely, you've got to put kids next to each other. In the classroom, you can, absolutely.
I just think it was a misconception on our part that the parents that were expecting their kids to go back to school with some kind of normalcy now feel like they've sent their kids back to, and there's no more socialization than there was in Plan B. They're still stuck in a classroom all day. They're eating lunch at their desk. They're not really mingling like the hope was for the mental aspect of the students. I have talked to several students since I found out, our parents, since I found out that the reason they sent their kids back was the socialization. And that's, I mean, now they've sent them from being home where they could take them out and do things, now they've taken them and put them in a classroom, locked up, confined. And that wasn't what they were expecting because they listened to the meeting. They listened to Madam Chair's comments about the cafeterias being open. And they were expecting, as I was, that we were going to use Plan A to its full extent. So it's not a matter of us dictating it and saying you must do it. I think it was just the, our perception was that it was going to happen.
Right. Because I told people out there, I don't mind saying it, I told people, oh, we're going to have cafeterias open. That's going to be wonderful. And the first day back, my son gets in the car, and he's like, well, we didn't go to the cafeteria today. Now, I understand if there's kids, like, I know that, I was there, I get it. I know that I enjoyed taking my kids back to the classroom sometimes and eating lunch and watching a movie under the guidelines you have now, or taking them outside to eat outside. Kids love that. But it's like Mr. George said, I just, I just think if we had known, because we all voted on that, you know, and it's hard to substantiate, it's hard to argue when somebody says, we've got them together on the buses. Why not in the classroom? And we've talked about this. I mean, we're all just having a conversation here. We've all talked, it's just, it's hard to say, well, I'm not really sure how to answer that question because I'm really not sure how to answer it. So I just, I just have concerns that, I just hope that we're making it extremely possible if our kids can go to the cafeterias, that they could go to the cafeterias. Because I think that's important. And not go and say, y'all can't talk the whole time because you're exposing anybody. I mean, we've got the mandate, we've been told now what Plan A is. And three feet is, like Mr. George said, it's a recommendation. It is not a be all, this is the way it shall be. This is just a recommendation. So it's like he said, you know, we've got so many families who are suffering mentally and emotionally now that that cafeteria is a big social part of school. It really is. So that's just my two cents. And other board members?
I could only imagine if you're a teacher and you finally get your students back in class, all in one place, the, especially if they, you know, if they have fallen behind or if there's a few that haven't got one concept of what you're trying to teach, it would be really tempting to be able to just keep them in the classroom and go and work through lunch. And that was one of the things I hope everybody kind of looks at, is that these kids need a little bit of break during the day. And I hope that we're not working them too hard trying to catch them up because I know that we've got a lot of assessments and everything coming up, and that temptation would be there. But also, it's just my personal thought is we don't, when we do get them in the school, we don't let them move enough as it is. And I think that part of getting up and going to the cafeteria and everything is part of that, getting them up, getting blood circulating, getting them moving around a little bit because I think we've even, over the years, have even cut recess time. And I just, I know it's easier to keep them in there, but maybe just give them the opportunity. And I'm not saying, I don't think the board wants to dictate it, but we're just asking maybe just administration just to take a look at it, is all.
Does that make sense, what we're saying and the concerns that we have?
Yes, ma'am.
When we've been told we can open under Plan A, and we're all for it. And when I mentioned Mr. George, well, you know, they have to keep them three feet apart. He said, no, I think that was a recommendation. And he went back and looked and said, no, it is in fact, and showed me, and printed that, showed that to me. I was like, well, then I don't understand what the concern is, so.
What was the, what was the concern with, you said that the principals, elementary school principals met? And was any of the concern was where the kids were being put back into a large setting? And the mental preparedness for that? I mean, what was exactly, was, I mean, because I'm sure there had to be a meeting and why they said what they said.
Yes, sir. I would say it really covered a wide range of things. I wouldn't want to put it on any one thing. Each school was a little bit different.
If you could just do the cliff notes of it.
Yes, sir. Some of it was the individual space sizes are different. Another example would be in the case of Topsail Elementary, with the number of students they have. They've actually had to use their cafeteria to do tutoring, and not sure that they could actually get all the students with the triangle pattern that we, we're under the impression we needed to follow by that. I mean, a student here, you skip a space, you have the next student, then across you have that. So you end up with a zigzag pattern. There was also concerns about changes to the master schedules overall, most of the elementaries, because they have been in since, I guess it was the end of October, if I remember right, have put in situations where they've got tutoring going on. They've got some of the resource stuff that we do for our ESL students and EC students and just in general interventions. If they start going back through the cafeteria again, their understanding with the cleaning rules was that they would have to drag out their cafeteria lunch times. We had, one of our principals did try to take a look at it. In order to get it through, the understanding was they would have to start around nine o'clock and finish around 1:30.
You said eat lunch at nine o'clock?
Starting at nine and then at 1:30.
That's ridiculous.
So again, I think from there, the time we met, their understanding was they had to clean the tables between every group of kids that came through. They would have to wipe down the tables. So they were adding, having to add a couple of minutes between each rotation. Where before, of course, you just sort of came through, and you might have the kids do the cleaning. And of course, we're understanding that kids aren't supposed to be touching the cleaning. So Dr. Hill said that they're, they just wanted to follow the rules as we understood it. And so when they looked at that, and I think that is a key difference between the elementaries and our 612. Our 612s didn't have any pre-existing situations, and they've been on B for the entire time. But I think the variety that Dr. Hill expressed among the middle and high, that the same situation would be somewhat true. Actually, two of our elementaries do have some students going. Malpas Corner looked at it, worked with the leadership team. They actually have pre-K and K going. And then Pendle Lee, if I remember correctly, it's K and 1, and then 8. And that was what they could kind of feel, that felt like they could kind of get through. So similar to what the middle and high did, as far as going back to leadership teams, was how the elementaries did it. Their responses for how they ended up in the same place were a little bit different from each one. I do think some had parents and staff express concerns about it, just as much though there are a number of people obviously that feel very differently on the other end, that our kids aren't together enough. I think our principals are dealing with both ends, in their schools, among their staff, and among their parents, where, you know, you take one step forward, you end up having to take one step back because different constituents feel differently about it. I don't, does that answer your question, Mr. Smith?
What was the cleaning, what did you say about the cleaning?
I thought, what's the recommendation for the cleaning now? There is none.
Is there a recommendation of the, I might be a misunderstanding, but is there a spacing now that is required?
It's just recommended three feet, but there's not like a requirement like there is under Plan B, from what I understand. Is that correct? Okay.
There's several recommendations. We follow all of them, we go back to virtual. So I mean, we pick and choose which ones we're following.
Yeah, I just think we have to be very careful how that's perceived out there. I don't know, I'm a rule follower too, you know, and I get it, and it's this way, this way. But when you've got things that are like, well, it's a recommendation, it doesn't mean you have to. I think we have to look at those things. Or, you know, we talked about middle schools eating in there. Well, my concern is, do we have enough tables? If, from my understanding, I know at certain middle schools that they're doing the three feet apart. So you would have, like, you have the tables, and you have the blue little seats or whatever they are. I'm going back to my days at CFPo. But, so you'd be here, and what, you skip a seat, and then you go another? Well, if you've got like a huge sixth grade, like I know Burgon Middle has a large sixth grade, do they have enough seats for those kids? I mean, you know, that's a question. Do we have enough seats for those? But if we don't have to do three feet, then are they sitting them beside each other? I don't know. It's just, there's a lot of gray that makes me a little nervous there. And like I said, it's hard to substantiate when we've got kids on the buses who are able to be however. And do we have a requirement on the playgrounds now?
No.
No. So see, that's another.
Were you in that meeting with the principals?
No, sir, I was not. That was led by our grade-level directors, and Mr. Taylor sat in to try to advise. I was aware of the recommendation to let the schools have an opportunity to make a site-based decision on how best to implement Plan A. We did not specifically tell them they had to send all students to the cafeteria. We directed them to look at their situation and figure out how to best make it work.
And that's why I just want to make sure is that everyone understands it's not that these elementary principals are doing something in defiance if they're not.
No, 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 not at all.
Yes, thank you, sir, that's very true.
And we are thankful for their planning because, I mean, they've got a lot on their shoulders, I'm sure, having to deal with.
It's just different mandates that make no sense when you compare them with each other, from other places, not from our county. So as I preach every time, things dictated from other places.
Well, and if they're eating in the classrooms, how are teachers getting their 30-minute duty-free lunch?
I'd have to actually go back and ask that specific question. I know the schools have tried to make it work, but I would not.
Isn't that listed somewhere in a general statute?
If you have the funds to do it, and if you have the means to do it, you have to do it. If you don't, you don't. Yeah, that's a general statute, it's not really enforceable.
That's exactly right. So there is a statute that says they're supposed to have a duty-free lunch. But more importantly, they're required to have a planning period. That's sort of the way the rubber meets the road, to be completely honest with you. Even people working during a planning period typically, that's a more definite situation. But yeah, Mr. George is right, it's more of a, there's a gray area when it comes to duty-free lunch. The expectation, I mean, I think the administrative expectation has always been that teachers have duty-free lunch, but in any given school day, that can be interrupted by any number of things, and there isn't much teeth to coming back on that, so.
All right.
What are you asking us to do then, Madam Chair?
Just what, what direction are you asking Dr. Hill and team to go with this? It's like Ms. Burns said, I agree with her. It's not like you're dictating, this is, we're not, I don't want it to come across as that. But what recommendations, just to follow Plan A as much as possible? Is that what you're asking, or is that what we're asking?
That's what we voted on.
That's what we voted on, that is true.
Yes, ma'am, I understand, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? All right. Was that all of that? Okay. All right. Information, agenda, item two, Spirit Rock, Pendle Lee Elementary, Pendle Lee Schools, excuse me.
Good evening, board members. I would like to cover items two through five so we can expedite this. These were projects that were brought to the operations department by principals, by various groups that were approved. This would normally be on your consent agenda, but since the items were, the work was to be done around spring break or during spring break, and there were similar items that had been approved by you folks before, the principals and operations department went ahead and gave them the green light. But I didn't want you to know what happened and what was going on with them. A parent, and in the paperwork, the parent's name is not mentioned, so I do not know the parent's name. At Pendle Lee donated a Spirit Rock, similar to Spirit Rocks at other schools throughout the county, which I think was a really good thing for that parent to do. The Surf City Elementary School sponsored a beautification day for the school, and they did some work around the school, on the campus and grounds. Renovation Church power washed and stained the picnic shelter that's at North Topsail Elementary School, which was actually on one of, they took off an item off of my list, of my to-do list. So I'm very happy that they did that. And also, they, at South Topsail Renovation Church, painted student bathrooms over the break. And I have not had a chance to take a look at them yet to see what kind of job they did, but I'm certain that with the work that they normally do, that they were done very well. Do you have any questions about any of those items? Can I move on to item number six?
Yes, sir.
Item number six, I've asked Ms. Godwin from Pender High School to be here for this. They have, they are requesting the conversion of two classrooms into a student services suite to house the counseling center, career development, college-ready programs. The proposal was attached. This is a project that's probably a little bit beyond my ability to say let's go ahead with it. I would like the board to have the information, be able to see what they are planning on doing, and be able to have some time to ask questions. The students at Pender High School did a, I'm stealing Ms. Godwin's thunder, I'm sorry, did a fantastic mock-up and model for it. And at this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Godwin and let her explain the thought process behind this conversion.
Good evening, board members. So just wanted to share a little information. Our student services team that is made up of our counselors and our student support coordinator and our college advisor and our career development coordinator, came to me with a vision. This was their proposal. And when I shared the proposal with Mr. LaFawn, and he came out and looked at the space that they were considering, we suggested that this be a student project. We wanted the students to help us build some type of model or some type of display that would help you be able to see this vision of having a suite and being able to use an area that's already available in our school. And so we combined the work of our carpentry class, who actually built the frame structure, and our art class to actually decorate and show how the individual rooms and setup would be. So I want to thank Mr. Jackson, who's our carpentry teacher, and Ms. Caperton, who's our art teacher, and all of the students in those classes who participated to help build this model. Those folks, and I'm quick, but they came to me with this proposal and talked a little bit about physical space and how environments speak to people before anybody ever utters a word. And so our, we had a needs assessment, and this was feedback from a needs assessment, that we don't really have a dedicated physical space that we use for post-secondary transition for counseling services or career development coordination. And so we just believe that having this space would allow us to service all stakeholders in a common area, give some private space where it's needed. But just to have all students know where they can come and receive those services so they're not walking around or wandering. Right now, our folks are split up. Some are in the office, some are in classroom. wandering. Right now, our folks are split up, some are in the office, some are in classrooms, some are out in a, in a vocational building, so it would be nice to have them all in one specific space. And it would help build relationships with our students and just provide opportunities for us to continue to develop them and make them college and career ready.
I think it's wonderful, and I love the fact that the, that students are the ones who helped create all of that. That's what we're talking about in Pender County. I love it.
I think, I think, I love it. The theme of vision, once we talked about it, and I thank everybody for the, for the idea, and for our teachers and students jumping, jumping on board. They, they had a lot of fun with it, and they kept calling me down to say, okay, what do we, what else do we need to do? What is this like? So, um, I, I think that, you know, it, it speaks volumes, it speaks for itself, that this is what we would like the area to look like, and what would promote supporting our students.
That is very exciting.
Any questions?
What part of the building is, is two classrooms, is that?
I'm sorry, yeah, so there are two, there, there's actually a suite of four computer labs, two of them are classrooms, and then two of them are actual labs, and so it's actually a space that run, the two labs would become one big open space that would have the individual offices.
It's when you walk into the front, it's-
Right behind my office.
And the, that's right, I thought, mhm.
Actually, it would be the two computer labs that connect to the media center.
Correct, okay.
So there's two that do that and then there's-
I did too, I had to get a visual.
Yeah, and, um, that would include, like I say, that would include the offices for all of the student support team, and it would also have a space for like, like a meeting space, where there would be a large table where we could bring in, um, someone if they wanted to do a graduation plan, or we needed to talk about, uh, something with a larger group, it would provide space for that.
If you, if you look at the model, uh, what I think's really, every desk has a little laptop computer on it, which is, uh, I thought was really cool. Um, and there's a lot, there's a tremendous amount of detail. Uh, the last hurdle for us will be to have a structural engineer come in, uh, to make sure, because the columns that, that we're going to remove the wall are load-bearing columns, but there, you know, our folks, you know, in the maintenance department, we, we, you know, if you know anything about the construction of Pender High School, the walls were made to be taken in and out anyway, uh, but we want to make sure that, uh, before we jump into any demolition, that we are okay with what we want to do structurally to, with the school. That would be the last hurdle, and if we get through that, then you will see this item again in May, uh, on the consent agenda for you to approve for us to do the work in the summer.
All right.
That, thank you.
Thank you. I love it. I know, I just love. All right, uh, number seven, installment pay discussion. Oh, this is another great item.
Just wanted to make, just wanted to make sure you're aware of what's going on, because some of you probably know how big of an issue installment pay is with a lot of our folks. Well, it's really interesting that with the new modernization that they're doing with finances is, they just found out they really can't do installment pay. So, they're now saying, we can no longer do the installment pay through the state as we have done it in the past. And then they don't really know what they want us to do. So, um, you know, we've all talked, when I say we, the finance officers, you know, statewide, because we're all in the same boat here, and as some of you know, the State Employees Credit Union has had the summer cash program for quite a while, but the most interesting thing about this is, it doesn't have to be the State Employees Credit Union, any bank can do this, and that's, I don't want anybody to think we're promoting the credit union, it's just that they have a program, and they have all the explanation, I sent you copies of everything, but I just wanted you to be aware that this isn't something we're doing here, this is something we're being required to do, and we wanted to get the information out there early as possible, so our folks can make the arrangements they need to make. We have a number of people that are actually doing this now, whether with the credit union or with their own bank, but we have, I didn't know the number now for about how many people we have actually own installment pay. Um, the interesting thing is, they require you by law to have all the year-round folks own installment installments, but they can't figure out how to make us do it, because the software that they are promoting now doesn't do it. But I did want you to see, you know, what we had sent out to the, um, everyone, and the brochure from the credit union and whatever, so just wanted to make sure you were aware of it. If people come to you about it, it's not something we can say, oh yeah, we're going to do it because we can't. It's just not going to be allowed by the state. It's really interesting to me, because all the money from these installments have always stayed with the state until we paid those checks out, and now they're giving up all that money and just going ahead and pay. It, it's just real interesting. But anyhow, so do y'all have any questions about this?
Have you had a lot of phone calls or conversations or emails?
Not a lot, and that concerns me a little bit, because I'm hoping they didn't just ignore this, and of course, we're asking the principals to make sure they're aware of it, because I'm afraid that some of them may come up, you know, right when it's time for pay, they go, oh my gosh, I didn't do anything. But we're going to keep, um, talking to them, because the credit union has very nicely offered to go out, you know, and talk to the faculties or whatever, so we're going to keep pushing that, so that they don't get caught off guard about it.
Madam Chair, uh, Ms. Bess is being very shy about it, she also made a wonderful video.
We saw that video, I was waiting for that to come up, because we all know that she just loves to be in front of a camera, not-
That was awful. Alex is so good, and I'm like, oh my god, this is awful. But anyhow, we did have a video, and I did my hands like that about a hundred times, but anyhow, we were, you know, we're just trying to be proactive with our folks, that they, they won't get, you know, lost in the shuffle here with this stuff, because we don't want them to get upset, but anyhow.
So if anyone out there is hearing this, this evening, and is like, what, what, what are you talking about? Please make sure you have all the information and pass it on to others that may not have that information.
And the email was sent to everybody, right?
Yes.
So, that, plus I see it, actual copies of the flyers, the credit union gave us about, I think about 600 of them, and I actually sent those out to the schools, so they could put them, where people could pick them up if they wanted to or whatever, so we're going to keep plugging along with it.
All right, thank you. Moving along, you're still up.
Okay, I've got the copy of the budget report, and of course, it was up to date at, um, four, seven, twenty, twenty-one, just showing you where we are with our budget, and we're moving along with it, about where we should be.
Any questions or concerns?
Anybody?
Comments?
Let's see what's next.
All right.
And then, of course, you've got the fuel and electric costs. Like I say, sometimes it's really hard to know the comparisons, because our years have been so messed up, but anyhow, this is what it is. Um, it's hard to believe we're getting down to the end of the year, it's so scary already. Any questions?
Any other questions or concerns or comments? All right, thank you, as always, Ms. Chestnut. All right, board members are now moving into the consent agenda, um, part of our agenda. If, has everyone had a chance to review all items on the consent agenda? Any question? Okay. If so, does any, which board member would like to make a motion, please, approving the consent agenda? Oh, yeah, that's right.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, Mr. Hall's made a motion, we approve the consent agenda, second?
I'll second.
Ms. Burns is seconding, I'll approve, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Say moved. All right, now moving into the action agenda. Number sixteen is CTE robotics program purchases for Pender High and Topsail High. Dr. Aiken?
Uh, yes, ma'am, and I just want to, um, bring to the board, there's a third page that was not attached in the board agenda, and that's, um, that's my fault for not making sure it was in there. To explain what it is, though, this is part of our continuing effort to, uh, bring in our new programs. Uh, we are looking to expand our robotics programs at, uh, Pender High and Topsail High School, so obviously a big piece of that is we've got to start buying more robotics kits. Uh, so the main part of the request is to purchase, um, kits for both schools, which would come to a total of $23,878.14, and then there should have been two additional documents in there regarding the professional development, uh, the one for Pender High School is in there, there is, there was to have been a duplicate, exact same thing for Topsail High School. Um, it had both been in there, the total would have been $31,980.46. What has been included is minus the $4,051.15 that we do have for Topsail High School. We have it, uh, ready to go, but it was not included in your packet, so, um, I know it's being reviewed, um, the documentation has been sent and begun to be reviewed by legal counsel. Uh, I'm not sure what is the most appropriate next step, um, in regards to the missing PO for the, the second piece of professional development.
Board, uh, would you like to see the second PO that has the identical information for, uh, Topsail High School, uh, before you, or is it sufficient, uh, under Mr. Aiken's, um, explanation, and then it's going to be subject to a legal review, and that I'll ensure that that third page is in there, uh, before that contract is finalized? Is that sufficient for you? Or would you like-
Everyone okay with that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, this time we need to have a motion made to approve this item. Who would like to make this motion?
Um, I would like to make a motion that we, uh, approve for $31,980.46 out of PRC zero seventeen, uh, CTE robotics program purchases for Pender High School and Topsail High School.
Ms. Burns has made the motion, do we have a second?
Madam, Madam Chair-
Oh, sorry.
Subject to legal review.
Subject to legal review.
Thank, thank, thank you, Ms. Burns.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. George is seconding, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Say moved. Thank you.
Thank you, and as soon as we have those robots up and running, we would love to invite you guys out to see them. It's going to be really cool.
All right, Mr. LaFawn, item seventeen, backhoe front-end loader purchase.
Good evening, board members. Again, um, operations department has, uh, come across a need, we realize we need a, a bigger backhoe, uh, one that can handle bigger jobs than what our smaller one does, and that can get into the places that are, um, the, the bigger one cannot get into. Um, it's not a, it's not something that we have, we're not replacing anything here, this is something that I'm, I would like to add to our vehicle fleet. Um, the cost is $39,319.50, uh, which will be paid from capital outlay, and it's from, uh, a McCormick backhoe from L N Equipment Company. I would ask for your approval for that.
All right, this time, who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve $39,319.50 from capital outlay for McCormick backhoe purchase from L N Equipment. That's a Burgon company, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. George has made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Burns is seconding, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Say moved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Number eighteen, Class Link yearly subscription renewal. Dr. Blum, write.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, for your approval is the yearly Class Link, um, subscription renewal, um, for a total of $34,391. I took the opportunity to, uh, pull some statistics. Logins this year, 1.2 million logins this year. Logins just for today, 8,514, and of course, with us being Plan A, and so many students being back, it is obvious this tool is being heavily utilized. So, it's been invaluable for us to be able to deliver instruction to the students, um, this past year. So, for your approval.
All right, at this time, we need a motion made.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve the Class Link yearly subscription renewal for the dollar amount that was presented.
Mr. Smith is, oh, sorry.
Subject, subject.
Subject to legal review.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith has made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hall's seconding, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say moved. Number nineteen, Go Guardian yearly subscription renewal. Dr. Blum, write.
And again, this goes hand in hand with Class Link, as we are now getting students back in, this will allow the students, let me back up, the genie's out of the bottle. The students are going to be using the internet, the Chromebooks, all of the tools that we have coming back this next year, hopefully anticipating a normal school year. When they're back in, this will allow, of course, the teachers to be able to parse out what they're going to see and what they're going to be able to access in the classrooms. And all the teachers have been trained in it, again, it's been an invaluable tool previously, we anticipate that it will be so again.
Okay.
Is this only on our network? Does this only work on our network, or is this?
Um, that's a good question. I can't answer that. I, when they go through Google Classroom, and the teacher has that, um, put out there, yes. So, um, if they're accessing it, I, I'm thinking offsite, but they're going through Class Link, yes. Um, as far as the other thing, if they're just like going at home-
Right.
-through theirs.
No.
No.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve $36,236.29 for Go Guardian subscription.
All right, Mr. George has made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Smith is seconding, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Say moved. Thank you, sir. Number twenty, ABC Collaborative MOU.
Good evening, board. As you know, uh, one of the caveats to the reopening our schools Act of 2021 was entering into a memorandum of agreement with ABC Collaborative, uh, which is a, uh, organization housed at Duke University. Um, the memorandum and agreement has been reviewed and is ready for your approval. Um, it, uh, allows for the statutorily required, um, sharing of information, uh, in a disaggregated format. They're getting numbers, they're not getting names or any sort of, uh, personally identifiable information for students. So, I recommend the approval of the agreement.
A recommendation has been made, do we have someone who would like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the ABC Collaborative MOU.
Ms. Burns has made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hall is seconding, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say moved. Okay. At this time, we need to move down, um, to item twenty-one, since we already went into closed session, am I correct? Board council, we're good? Okay. Um, we need to have a motion made in order to accept human resource report and addendum as presented earlier this evening. Who would like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the HR reporters presented.
We have a mo-, uh, Mr. George has made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hall is seconding, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say moved. And now, item twenty-two, that we had, uh, moved to look at for the summer school planning program.
Yes, ma'am, uh, would like to present to the board our proposal regarding, uh, the implementation of a summer learning stipend compensation plan, um, as presented earlier in the meeting.
At this time, board members, we need to have a motion made so that they can, and then second in, and I'll vote it on, so that we can move forward in this process. Time is the es- of the essence in this. Who would like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the summer-
Planning.
Learning stipend compensation.
Yeah.
Yes, that.
Mr. George has made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Burns is seconding, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say moved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, at this time, it looks like we're moving back up to comments from the board members, and then report from the superintendent. Who would like to go first? Mr. Hall, let's start with you. Any comments?
Let's let Dr. Hill go first, can we do that?
Oh, sure.
You have a problem with that?
Oh, we're just going to move, go ahead.
I've got a mixed, uh, a couple of things, boys, I just want to talk about for a second. One is, uh, I would say that our Say Something app, uh, Friday night about eleven o'clock, um, we actually prevented a suicide by a ninth-grade student in this county, uh, by a peer student who contacted that app and reported that situation. We were able to work with emergency services mental health, and I'm happy to say that that student has received help and that we have saved a life. So, I just want to applaud what's going on within this district and the staff, and, and all our colleagues and peer groups that we work with, and emergency services- our colleagues and peer groups that we work with in emergency services and mental health. I just feel like that's something to be celebrated, that we are actually much more than a school system traditionally is what people think. And I appreciate the staff members that responded to that, the conversations we had over the weekend. Again, on a sad note, I would like to ask the board and everyone listening to send prayers to the family of a student that we have passed away in a violent act. We attended her funeral this past Friday, and it's just sad to see a young lady who was an honors student who had planned to graduate early and who had already enrolled in college, to lose her life in an act of violence like that. And I just wish that if I could, please ask the board to pray for their family and just keep them in their thoughts. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Will you share the name of that kid? No. But it is a student that was a high school, used to about to graduate. Okay.
Any board members have any comments? That, Mr. Hall, would you like to make any comments?
No, not with, if Dr. Hill's finished, I will. Just wanna thank everybody for their continued hard work for this crazy school year. And number two, at some point, I'd like to have a little discussion on some civics class issues that we need to talk about at some point. Okay? That's it.
All right. Mr. Smith?
I have a question. Where do we stand with RFP for attorneys?
It's December 23rd.
Okay. Have any submitted anything yet? The question is, what is procedure? We had in public comment read about the mask mandate. Has there been any lifting on that for the going outside? I know some of the principals and teachers and all have also expressed a concern seeing these kids out running and playing, and the temperatures are getting hotter, and then we're talking about moving into a summer school type schedule. What can be done, if anything, to bring some comfort in that situation? Is it now is the mask recommendation when they're outside playing? Is it law? Is it, what exactly do we have on the books?
It's recommendation, except for with the executive order. So, thank you.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot with that.
Brandon can weigh in on me. Currently, at the, with the CDC, it's a recommendation. But with the Governor's Executive Order 204, it is still a mandate. Am I getting that correct? So. Mandate means shall.
So the children have to, when they're outside, they, the governor is requiring them to wear a mask outside. And nothing can be done about that. Have we had any instances with, I mean, they're breathing in their own air, they're outside. This has become to the, you know, it's almost become, if it wasn't such a health concern, what these masks are doing, it's really become a concern with a lot of parents, not just the one who emailed today. And I think all the board members would agree that these kids going outside like that, we want them outside, but at what price are we paying for them to be out running around and doing that? I don't know. I mean, that's why, I mean, I'm just asking what recommendation, if there's nothing we can do, just say there's nothing we can do.
And I am pulling up the short version of Executive Order 204. And, so, face covering indoors, face coverings continue to be required in public outdoor settings if individuals are unable to maintain six feet of social distance from non-household members.
And it's also in the lighting our way forward document. And in the lighting our way forward document, they give you examples of where and when masks are required and when they're not required. And I think the reason why I'm stressing what I'm saying and making more of issue out of it than what maybe some think I should is because I don't want anyone to think that Beth Burns, Brad George, Cindy Fontana, Don Hall, or Ken Smith is the one who is making these children wear their mask outside in the heat in all this situation because we are not doing that. We're having to follow the orders of someone who has done this. And so this board, if it were up to me, I agree 100% with these parents that the kids outside, because I see on Facebook and social media where all these children are out playing everywhere else without masks on, and then when they come here and put on a mask, and it just adds even more structural, you know, challenges. But I do want the public to know that this is not a Pender County school we're having to follow. If this is what you're telling me, then we're having to follow this mandate, that we're not the ones setting this because we're being asked, why are we making our children do it? And I have a child in public schools, and I wanna make sure that everyone understands this is not the board members doing this.
Thank you. Well said. Well said.
That is correct, Mr. Smith.
I mean, that's all, I mean, I'm not trying to pass the book. I just wanna make sure that if somebody has a complaint, they know exactly what direction to send those arrows, not figuratively, of course. Thank you. And the last thing, as I know that we're not allowed, and the public might wonder, we're not allowed to pray at these school board meetings with the fear of being, have a legal action brought against us. But I will ask the attorney, are we allowed to have a moment of silence?
You are absolutely allowed to have a moment of silence.
If it's all right with the other board members for the young lady, and I won't think in at the time, and I won't try to get you disclosing name, but I won't think because of that, but the family knows, the school knows, and we know who the young lady was. And I was wondering if it would be appropriate, if it's all right, Madam Chairman, if we take a moment of silence, we can do it at the end when you're done with your, before we adjourn, whatever you like to do, and you can lead us in that, Madam Chairman. That's all I have.
All right. Is that okay with the rest of the board members after comments?
Very much.
All right, absolutely. Thank you, sir. Well said. Mr. George?
So Mr. Smith, he's hit on one of my topics I wrote down here, the mask mandate. That was on my list, too. Yeah, I wanna make sure everybody knows that's not us doing it. There's nothing more I would like to see than everybody's face again. So if you have issues with that, there's an address you can send your concerns to in Raleigh. I'm sure he gets plenty of them every day. Now, on that same note, we are getting near, we're having a lot of questions about proms and graduation. I've seen there was some tentative plans. Is that something we can, you can share with us now? Or, Dr. Hill, what do you?
If you wouldn't mind, would you mind if we write those up and give them to you exactly? Because we have been looking at others and discussing that with legal to make sure we're doing them to the extent that we can. But I'd hate to speak out of turn about exactly each detail of every school.
That's fine. But I also want the public to know that we can't plan a prom. I mean, we're not, our mass gathering doesn't allow traditional prom as a school function. That's not saying that there's several New Hanover County schools, Onzeal County schools, and I know of one Pender County school that are having private proms. And I'm glad to see that, that someone has taken upon themselves the plan to give these seniors and juniors some kind of normal ending to their high school career. Same thing with graduation at this time. That's still, I guess, up in the air, Mr. Turning?
Yes, sir, Mr. George. I wouldn't necessarily say it's up in the air, but the limitations of the current executive order are 50% of fire capacity for the facility, whether that's an indoor or an outdoor facility. Those are your current limitations. The count would not include the individuals on the field who would be the people that you'd be watching. So your capacity in the stands and around would be whatever your fire capacity is by half, and maintaining six feet between groups of people, not individuals, but groups of people. And that's based on the executive order that exists right now, and it will expire on April 30th. And until then, I can't tell you what the rules are gonna be after April 30th. Mr. George?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Which also makes no sense that you have to stay six feet apart outside, but we are recommended three foot inside or no physical distance. So if that makes sense to anyone, if you'll email me and let me know how that makes sense, I'd appreciate it. Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Ms. Burns?
Well, this is, this is what happens when you go last because everybody pretty much covers every topic that you had written down. There was only a couple of things. I'm gonna reiterate what my fellow board members said. I too am waiting for the day that we can take these masks off, and it sure would be nice if we could allow these children to go outside and play and take down their mask as long as they are socially distant. It would be nice. But thereto, hopefully, that day is coming soon. See, really, the last thing I have is April is Autism Awareness Month, and someone I love very much has autism. And I just wanted to say to all of you parents out there who do have someone special in your life who has autism, that, you know, you've got a member up here also who feels your pain and your joy. And also to thank the E C department for everything they do every day for our children here in Pender County schools. And just, just to say, you know, just because your child is different does not mean that they are less. So had to say it.
Absolutely.
So anyway, thank you for everything that all Pender County people are doing. Had a good month. So, thank you.
Last of all, just wanna echo what Mr. George and Mr. Smith especially said. Lots of things come at us that you guys do this, and you guys do that, and you guys are doing this. And when they say us five, they're talking about everybody within our school system. But I think, as you've heard tonight, it is not us dictating these things. We are simply doing what we are being told to do. We talk about, you know, our kids outside, they have to wear a mask, and the recommendations are things that we have to do or can't do for graduations and all. Well, it became very true for me this weekend as I had to say goodbye to my grandmother. Yes, she was 101, and she was feisty, and she had lived a good life, but no matter what, that woman was still my grandma. And I tell you what, if I've ever, I, it really came to light just what a pandemic we really are in when I was not allowed to take my mask off, I was not allowed to take my gloves off and be there with the woman that has meant so much to me for 56 years when I allowed her to begin the transition process. So, you know, it is the way it is. We might not like it, but as I think they have told you, some of our other board members have told you, there's an address you can write to. Feel free to do so. Thank you all to everyone who's doing such a great job. I know it's hard. I know you're tired. Teachers, I look at you every day at your car lots, and I see you getting the kids out of school in the morning. By the end of the day, you are just worn out. You have almost made it to the end of the year, so thank you all for a job well done. And as Mr. Smith recommended, and I think we should all do, if we could please just take a moment of silence to remember the family who has lost a loved one in such a tragic accident recently.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we adjourn to Smith.
Mr. Smith has made the motion that we adjourn this evening. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Burns is seconding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Everyone, have a great evening. Enjoy your week. Thank you, everybody.